Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. The time is 2:45. The meeting is recording and I see Commissioner Carpio and yourself on the call, so we do have a quorum. Commissioner Feinstein should be joining us as well, but he does have a hard stop at 3 o'clock.
Very good. Thank you. Well, let's kick things off. I hereby call to order this meeting of the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Thursday, August 14th, 2025, and the time is 2:45 PM. For those commissioners that are in attendance, please identify themselves and state whether they are here via telephone or Google Meets or in person.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. This is Alex Carpio, and I'm here on Google Meets.
Welcome, Commissioner. It's good to have you. I am Scott Fletcher, and I am here via telephone. Hopefully Commissioner Feinstein will join us here at some point, too. But let's press on into our new business. B is our new business. B1 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228, A, B, and E, and 5-229. The renewal license application submitted by Mr. Mark Berry on behalf of Legacy Fighting Alliance, LLC for a 2025 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Berry's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our financial investigators found that Legacy Fighting Alliance is financially stable. There was nothing that rose to a level of concern in the report, and therefore I recommend the approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Yes, it's great to see LFA back in the mix. We've had a long history with them, and we're always glad to see him showing up. So we appreciate you reapplying. Commissioner, do you have thoughts, questions regarding Legacy Fighting Alliance?
No questions from me, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to ARS section 5227, 5228, A, B, E, 5229, I move that we approve the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Mark Berry on behalf of Legacy Fighting Alliance, LLC for a 2025 promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Berry. We'll look forward to an LFA event here soon. Item B2 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons at least 38 years of age. The new license application submitted by Mr. David Bolia for a 2025 professional MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, let's talk about this one.
Mr. Chairman, I did forget to mention for the record that Val Marciano, our Assistant Attorney General, is here in my office with me, just so you're aware. But as it relates to Mr. Bolia, and I'll state for the record his age, as previously requested by the commission, he's 44 years old. He has a professional MMA record of nine and three. His most recent bout was in February of this year, and he won by second round submission by triangle choke. As for his training regimen, he says that he trains twice a day, two hours each session. He's an instructor at Extreme Couture, and he also teaches beginners MMA and Jiu-Jitsu. He trains six days a week, including instruction, and he says that he spars Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays with the pro team. He does cardio every day and strength chains three to four times a week. He feels great about his upcoming fight, and he says he competed this year, came out with a finish against a skilled opponent with a lot of fights like Jimmy. No injuries as of yet to report, and with that, sir, I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. I appreciate your deep dive on these guys, so we know as much as we can about them. Commissioner Carpio, you have thoughts regarding Mr. Bolia?
No, 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 no questions from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I agree. I think he's fit and probably ready to go. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS section 5227, 5228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons at least 38 years of age, I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. David Bolia for the 2025 professional MMA combatant license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Bolia.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for chiming in, too. We appreciate your time. Good luck to you.
Cool.
B3 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons at least 38 years of age. The new license application submitted by Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez for a 2025 professional MMA combatant license. Mr. Vella, let's talk about Mr. Lopez.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lopez, as previously stated, for the record, I'll state his age. He's 51 years old. He's got an overall record. He's competed across MMA, boxing, bare knuckle, and kickboxing. His career spans 20 years, and his overall record across those sports is 73, 51, and two. As this application is for an MMA professional license, his overall MMA professional record is 64, 33, and oh. And with that, sir, his training regimen consists of the following. His training sessions, he does one hour in the morning and one hour in the evening, so twice a day. He trains Monday through Friday, five days a week, and it consists of, in the morning, he runs and lifts weights. He does two miles usually, but for the last two weeks in preparation for his upcoming bout, he has been doing a mile, and it's been more of an explosive sprint type of a cardio session. He does 45 minutes of weights in the morning in addition to that running, and in the evenings, he does bag work, shadow boxing, jumping jacks, groundwork, and other calisthenic drills for an hour usually, and he spars every Tuesday, usually five to 10 rounds. He says he feels good about his upcoming fight. He's happy that his opponent is somebody and can actually be a good challenger. I'm quoting him here. This time, he says he started training multiple months in advance to prepare for the event rather than waiting for an opponent before starting training. Even though he says that there's an age gap, to him, there is no difference, and that the age gap is not a problem. He has fought guys in their 20s before, and it was never a problem, and it is still not a problem. He says that he feels prepared to compete because he's had a full training camp spanning over two months, and he knows that he can do this. He's confident. He's talked to other fighters who have previously retired because they were either injured or damaged, and he says he's not like them. He is injury and damage free, and he's ready. He has not experienced any recent injuries. With that, sir, I'd also like to state that Joel Lopez had provided us a written email in support of Mr. Lopez, and I'd like to read it for the record. He stated that, I'm going to read it now, "Dear AZ Boxing MMA Commission, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to express our support for professional MMA fighter Tony Lopez, who is scheduled to compete at Rough 64 this weekend. Tony is an exceptional athlete with an impressive record of nearly 100 fights. At 51 years of age, his career and dedication to the sport deserve recognition and careful consideration. Tony's most recent MMA fight resulted in a victory against Ben Moe in 2022, where he won decisively with a knockout, bringing his record to an impressive 64 and 33. Additionally, his last four fights in 2023, where he went 2-2, were in bare knuckle and boxing, where he demonstrated remarkable resilience and skill. Notably, the last two of these fights went the distance, each spanning five by five grueling rounds. We understand that Tony's age raises concerns regarding safety. However, we would like to emphasize that his medical evaluations are up to date and show no issues that would jeopardize his health or performance. In fact, I'm not going to go into any other details. The rest of the note specifies his medical information, so I won't go there. But he does say that he believes that allowing Tony to compete in this match would illustrate the importance of fairness, perseverance, and dedication in MMA, and thank you for considering this request for special permission for Tony to compete. So with all of that, and based on the fact that Mr. Lopez has been cleared medically in all of the required medical examinations, I do not have any concerns."
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Yes, Mr. Lopez has a lot of miles on his odometer. It's an impressive career he's put together. He's been very busy for a very long time. That's the only way you get to 120 some odd fights. Commissioner Carpio, what are your thoughts regarding Mr. Lopez's application?
What is the age gap between Mr. Lopez and Mr. Fortune?
16 years.
And the last time Mr. Lopez fought was that 2024 bare knuckle?
It was a boxing bout in 2024.
Okay, so he has not fought in 2025?
Correct.
Has he been trying to get licensed in other states, and how did that go?
In his application, he indicated that he has not ever been denied a license in any other jurisdiction, but I do not know as to recent applications in other states. Mr. Lopez is on the call. He could probably speak to that if that's okay, Commissioner.
Yeah?
Yeah, I have not applied for any other licenses at this point, but as I said, when I do apply, I do get accepted. I do not get denied because of my age or anything other than the fact that I am qualified, and I do pass all my physicals.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman, and I believe I'll recommend it, and I have a motion pursuant to ARS section 5227, 5228, AAC R19-2-C604 for persons at least 38 years of age. I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez for a 2025 professional MMA combatant license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lopez, but don't go anywhere. Let's talk about you again on item B4, but you are officially licensed at this point. B4 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227 and AAC R19-2-B603. The review and consideration proposed professional MMA contest between Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez and Mr. Tyrell Fortune, submitted by matchmaker Jason Martinez for a Rough Nation MMA event this Saturday, August 16th, at the Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona. Mr. Vella, will you speak to B4, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, as you know, I do extensive research anytime we have matches proposed. So for every bout that takes place here, we do this. However, I wanted to open this one up so that if there were any concerns or anything that the commissioners wanted to weigh in on or anybody else, we could admit that. Obviously, as previously stated, Mr. Lopez has a very extensive career and a lot of experience. He's fought against some pretty competitive opponents in the past. And so, at the outset, when I first evaluated this, something that stood out to me was that Mr. Lopez has lost his last three bouts by late stoppages. His proposed opponent, Mr. Fortune, won his last bout by a second round TKO. However, with that said, Lopez's last three bouts were not in MMA, and MMA is his primary sport, if you will. And so, for example, in his most recent bout, which was a professional boxing contest, Mr. Lopez faced a gentleman by the name of Detrelis Webster, and Detrelis is a professional boxer with a 56% knockout rate, and also, Mr. Lopez almost went the distance. The bout was stopped in the very last round, which was the sixth round, with 26 seconds left to go. And so, again, given that this proposed bout is an MMA bout, and this is more in line with Mr. Lopez's primary background, then I think it's important to call out how his last performance in MMA went, and Mr. Lopez won his last MMA contest in 2022 by an early stoppage knockout by a kick. Okay? With that, you know, I think it's also important to lay out between these two that Mr. Lopez's overall record in MMA being 64 and 33, he does bring a lot more experience. So while Mr. Fortune is younger by quite a margin, 16 years, when you look at their abilities, I think that they're pretty evenly matched in many ways. For example, Mr. Fortune stands six foot two, Mr. Lopez stands six foot five. They both have historically weighed in between 230 and 260 pounds on any other given weigh-ins, and in their most recent fights, they each weighed in, Mr. Lopez weighed in at 230 pounds in his last fight, and Mr. Fortune weighed in at 230.8. And then their reach, Fortune has a reach of 77 inches, Lopez has a reach of 79 inches. So overall, sir, just to give a complete overall picture of this bout, I do think that this is a pretty evenly matched bout, and I do not have any concerns other than, as I had mentioned, the last few of Mr. Lopez's bouts having been stopped by TKO, but they were not in MMA. And so, I believe that this warrants approval, but I would like to hear from the commissioners and anybody else who may feel differently.
Sure. I appreciate that, Mr. Vella, and thank you for doing so. Mr. Lopez, take no offense, please. Anytime someone at your age applies for a license, we like to spend a little bit of time with them and make sure we're heading in the right direction. Your career is fantastic. It makes you instantly a great trainer or coach or other thing when you decide to hang up the gloves. There's a lot of ways to stay involved in the sport without getting in a cage, but I know that's not what you want to hear right now. But you have really an impressive career behind you, and obviously, things to come as well. Mr. Carpio, what thoughts, questions do you have?
You know, obviously, the age gap and the fact that an email was provided, it does kind of create a little bit of, you know, for me at least, is this going to be safe or not? But I think after hearing Mr. Vella and his record and his overall fights, I think, you know, I think we're ready for a vote.
Fair enough. I tend to agree, Commissioner, and we always tend to side on the side of safety, so we're going to kick the tires every time we get the chance. Mr. Vella, I appreciate you opening up this conversation. There are no motions necessary here. It sounds like we're ready to go. Am I correct?
My friends, Dr. Oda here, I'm on this call as well. I just wanted to make sure before any decisions are made. I'm not really sure how this meeting runs, but is there anything that you need from me or want to hear from me?
I appreciate you chiming in, doctor.
Yeah, I'll be at the fight on Saturday as well.
Okay, okay, great. Well, what are your initial thoughts about this?
So, everything that has been brought up, of course, same issues are on my mind. I would like to say, I believe I have, I know I've seen Mr. Lopez fight at least a couple times, and of course, his cardio, his power, his endurance has always been impressive. I've never had, as a physician from ringside, I've never had any doubts or question about cardiovascular ability, strength, agility, nothing along those lines. And I've taken a look at his documentation from the physicians that he recently saw for his licensure. All that looks good, too. I just want to make sure that this is known, because I don't know how much this is talked about, but as we age, the veins that are inside of our skull, it does not take, how should I say this, the same amount of force that would, let me rephrase, I apologize, the risk of intracranial hemorrhage is higher the older we get. So, what, let's say there's an X degree of force that is, that a 30-year-old receives to his or her cranium, that same amount of force could cause damage to one that is older. That's not rocket science. I'm sure that that can be accepted. Furthermore, when it comes to concussions, the symptoms of a concussion can be worse with older age. So, these are just a couple of issues that I want to make sure are understood, recognized, before you move forward with this, Mr. Lopez. Those are just the two points that I wanted to bring
Thank you, Dr. Oda. We always appreciate your thoughts, especially in situations like this. Mr. Vella, your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Lopez had come off mute.
Yes, please, Mr. Lopez. He's up the floor.
Oh, thank you. You know, I'll put the doctor aside. By the way, the older you get, easier it is to get, you know, serious damage. One thing I want to leave you guys with, if you watch my fights, you've seen me take hits, and a lot of them. And the thing with that is that I don't take the hits 100%. Because of my experience and my time in the cage, I've learned to go with the hit. So when someone hits me at full force, they'll only hit me with maybe 50%, not that much, and then deflect me. So, it might look like, oh my God, let me take a hit, but there's so many times where someone unloads on me, and just when they're done, I turn around, I just reply back at them because those hits that they hit me with were less than 50%, because, you know, I'm dodging, moving with the punch. And so, you know, just so I let you guys know that my experience has paid off in keeping me the way I am healthy and injury-free. And so, I just want to share that with you guys. So, you know, when somebody hits me, it's not that, oh, man, I did, I got blocked, but I can take it. I'm a tough guy, I've got a hard head. No, it's because I've learned to go with the punch, so that I don't take the damage, I don't get that concussion, I don't get hurt, so I can continue to do what I love to do, to fight.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Appreciate you talking to that. I've seen you fight a couple times, too, as did Dr. Oda speak to, and you're an impressive big man. You know, 51 could be done a couple different ways, and you seem to be in prime shape for your age, too. But I appreciate you speaking to that. Commissioner Carpio, any thoughts?
Mr. Lopez, I just have a question. Have you gone into the concussion protocol before? When's the last time, and how many times?
Hey, I'm into concussion protocol. What is that exactly?
Commissioner, Mr. Lopez, we do have on file a baseline for Mr. Lopez, obviously as a prerequisite to his licensing, and there were no concerns.
So, my question is, has he had to, has he had a concussion where he had to undergo, you know, a protocol for, you know, having to rest 24, 48 hours, and then on no contact? And has he had that ever in his career?
I'll say that I know. You know, because I, you know, I've fought back to back, you know, with, you know, between fights, and it, I mean, there was a time where I fought 50 years, you know, and that's the thing about, like I said, with the way I've sold the punches, I avoid the damage, so I can continue to do what I do. So, I mean, as far as I know, I've never been, you know, told, hey, you know, you can't fight because you got a concussion, or you're at risk for having a concussion. So, that's just to my knowledge. Every time I've gone to the doctor, I've always been there.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Vella, if we find ourselves fine with this going forward, is there anything we need to do? Is there a motion we need to pass?
Yeah, I think that a motion would be appropriate, given that, you know, there could be additional context on this.
Okay, fair enough. And again, we really appreciate your deep dive on this. It's important we get these right when we see them. Commissioner Carpio, the chair would be open to a motion if you feel so inclined in crafting one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS section 5227 and AAC R19-2-B603, the review and consideration of the proposed professional MMA contest between Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez and Mr. Tyrell Fortune, submitted by matchmaker Jason Martinez for Rough Nation MMA event this Saturday, August 16th, at the Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona, I move that we approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I will second the motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Lopez. Best of luck Saturday night.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you for your time. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Item C is our information report. C1 is our event reports. The following events were conditionally approved by the Executive Director. The first is a request from Team Combat League, LLLP, for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Renaissance Hotel in Glendale, Arizona on Sunday, August 31st, 2025. And the second is a request from Legacy Fighting Alliance for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Arizona Financial Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, October 25th, 2025. So, a couple more nice events added to our list, Mr. Vella.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Moving forward, these are called to the public. Mr. Vella, does anyone have an interest in chatting with us?
At this time, I do not see anyone wishing to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. These are called to the commission. Commission members or the Executive Director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Mr. Vella, anything else you'd like to talk about?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention what we've been up to. We've been quite busy since our last, since our last commission meeting, and so we've had plenty of good events. We had, Yuma Fight League did their first event down in Yuma. It went really well. The promotion was organized, and they had everything that we needed when we asked. And so, I look forward to them putting on more events. I think they're going to shoot for one more before the end of the year. And then we also had Yukon LLC Samurai Soul Championship last weekend, did an MMA event at Washington High School, and that was another successful event. And in between those two events, we, Idani and I, took a trip to New Orleans for the ABC Conference, and that went very well. We got to see our colleagues from other parts of the country, and had some really good discussions about things to come and some of the current events going on in our industry. But that's all I have. As far as updates go, this weekend, as a reminder, this weekend, we do have Rough MMA on Saturday at Celebrity Theater, but that's all I've got for today.
Well, fantastic. I'm so glad you two got a chance to go to the ABC again. That's such a great gathering, and the way these sports work, it's important to know the people in the other states, too. So that's a great way to get to know everybody and stay in touch and work on making these sports better, safer, et cetera. So, thank you. Thank you both for taking the time and doing so. Mr. Carpio, anything else you want to talk about?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I, too, have probably said my piece so far. How about this one? F, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be held virtually via Google Meets at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, and is subject to change based on a quorum. And item G is the possibility of an adjournment. Is there a motion for one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Thank you all for your time and interest. We are adjourned. Motion carries two to zero. Thank you all for your time and interest. We are adjourned. Take care. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.